Start wandering to your location. We will get started. I have 1807, a few minutes behind. I apologize. 1807, we'll call a special session to order for the night of September 29th. And we will get the ball rolling. So first up, announcements and citizen comments. So this is an opportunity for members of the public to suggest addition of topics for the discussion, or, oh, I'm sorry, Matt, are we going? I was supposed to tell you we're rolling. I'm sorry. My apologies. Address topics of interest with the presentation. Limited three minutes. All speakers, please conduct themselves in an orderly and lawful manner. All speakers will be recognized. Right of speaking will announce their name and address to be included in the minutes. State law prohibits the mayor and members of council from commenting on any statement or engaging in dialogue without appropriate agenda item being posted in accordance with the Texas open meeting laws. Ms. JoJo, first up.
Thank you. Repeat again, guys. Joelle Guzman, JoJo, 22 Willa Run Drive. And again, I want to end up thanking the council members for their service and acknowledge the challenges that you all have been facing. I appreciate the work that you do for our community and understand the many obstacles beyond your control. That said, the ongoing budget delays are troubling. This budget should have been completed months ago, even accounting for changes along the way. Yet these delays appear to stem directly from some entities not fulfilling their responsibilities in a timely manner. While training and consultations are important, the amount being requested for finance HR far exceeds, in my opinion, what is reasonable for a city of our size. The city should not be expected to fund such a large allocation for training and consulting fees. If personnel lack the essential skills to perform their duties, it is not the responsibility of residents to cover the cost of correcting those gaps. Instead, it is necessary to ensure that staff are in the right positions and are adequately qualified to handle those responsibilities. The budget is so important for our city to be held back by performance issues and lack of concern for providing council and residents with information in a timely manner. I respectfully ask that the council consider for in the future taking steps to ensure the accountability and address these concerns now and for in the future to help avoid future delays and issues of overextension of budgets and line items and so forth. I really do appreciate you all's time and thank you all very much for everything that you all do for us.
Back on. Buttons are hard. Thank you, ma'am. Donna.
Donna Hartman, 112 Great West Loop. And I want to reiterate that. Thank you so much to the council and the staff. I know you all have dedicated hours and hours on this budget. And it's really appreciated. And of course, you know how ecstatic is the word I am using, that we got another budget done. I may eventually be able to get off that audit, what, a budget, a audit done. Oh, my gosh. You all know what I talk about up here. I don't even have to say it. I mean, I can almost get off my soapbox, you know? That would be so fantastic. I've been preaching on it for about four years. I don't know if you're still considering the fees, but I want to, once again, say I don't believe that they're equitable. They put a burden on our lower income and fixed income families. If you decide to go with increasing the taxes a little bit to help with this, it would be a little more equitable. Everybody would pay for it, not just the water customers. And my math does at 425,000 of a tax appraisal, they'll break even. So they'll pay less. Anybody with a house appraised under that would pay less than what they would with the fees, and it's more equitable. I'm still a little, I'm still not real clear on the quarterly cleanup, but I can get with you all after that. But my math, the 25,000 was added into that. And I just want to, I know we're talking about quarterly cleanup and brush, but remember quarterly cleanup is much more than just brush. So I want to keep that in mind. So I'm just not real clear, but I'll get with you all later. I want to take up my three minutes. Also, on the brush items, let's make sure we have a clear and transparent of expenses and revenues, because that's one of y'all's top priorities. So we want to see it's going in, here's where it's going out. If it's in salaries of the fuel mitigation person or a piece of equipment, we really want to make sure that that's really clear to all of us. So each year, we can look at that and say, here's what we did last year, here's what we accomplished, here's what we need. And I do want to share a concern that Alderman Allen had with the salaries. I mean, I look at them and I realize it's been a couple of years since I've been on the council, but they have really seemed to escalate it. And maybe we've got a couple of positions still open. Maybe we need to really reexamine what we need in those positions. Do we need a master's degree? You know, what do we need in those positions? And then what the city our size can afford to pay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Carrie.
Carrie Erskine, former employee. I sent several council members, including the mayor, confidential. So anyway, I sent former council members and the mayor a, basically a calendar put out by Texas Municipal League, the legal department. So when the tax rate exceeds voter approval rate, these, and I'm just going to read verbatim, so they can follow it along with me. These are absolute deadlines and assumes the city waits until the last minute for each step. In most cases, the city would be well advised to act in advance of the state. You can go through all seven pages, but the tax rate adoption basically is Monday, August 25th. So if you all go through with this tax rate adoption, you are violating state law. So the easiest way to do this is, you can do this, however, you're not giving anything over the voter approval rate in a bigger city, automatically it requires an election. Anything under 30,000, that's why you get to use the de minimis rate. Under 30,000, you have to allow the voters to petition for an election. The most clear case example of this is Villages Lata last year. They used the de minimis rate. Their voters got the required signatures on the petition, the ballot, and it went to the November ballot. And they actually had to go back to the voter approval rate. So, you know, for here, y'all's proposed tax rate, I didn't get to watch the workshop, is 63.98. The voter approval rate is 57.38. It's roughly about a delta of 6.6 cents. So I'm just warning you, because I want residents to know, if you are doing this, you're not giving them the required time to petition. And I think with all the other issues that are going around in the city, I think the petition percentage is 3%. I'm pretty sure you all are going to get 60 to 70 signatures that are required to do this. And then if they get that, and you don't get it on the November election, what are you going to do next? So it's something to think about. That's why you have a budget calendar. The first three years we were here, we followed that TML calendar to the T almost. Something has happened in the last two years, and I don't know what it is. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Denise.
Denise Seibert, 114 Great West Loop. I want to say thank you all for all the work you've done to get a clean audit. I mean, that is super. But I do want to remind us that Gatesville's doing an 8% increase in their taxes, and then Copper's Cove is wanting to add $10 to a water bill for roads. So we're not the only one having to increase things. And because of COVID and the increase that has been happening here in the United States, it's countrywide. You know, we've got to be able to take care of our roads. We've got to be able to get that water system up and going, so we'll be taken care of. No water, no roads won't matter. Houses won't matter, because we won't have people if we don't have water. And we don't want to look like Marlin. So we do need to think about our budget and how far we need to go. Make sure this city is taken care of, and the people here are taken care of. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. All right. Dennis, counsel, what I would like to do, if there are no objections again, is go slightly out of order and proceed down to Resolution 25031 to bring forward our partners from our auditing firm. Any objections to that? We will take care of the audit and get him cut loose, so he can go enjoy the rest of his allergy-fed.
Did we get a resolution today?
There is a resolution, CCMR for that. It was. It should be, you see, 25 RS 25031. Discuss, consider, amend, resolution, accepting FY.
Oh, I see it. Yes, thank you. Sorry.
Oh, yes, sir. I'm sorry. Not a problem. No, I was on the verge of sneezing, so I'm like, okay. Thank you again for having me. Louis Brie Love, Senior Audit Manager, Brooks Watson. I know this will, I'm going to keep it a little shorter and sweeter for you, since I did just run through this with you guys during the workshop, but also happy to get into detail on anything you have questions about. This is real quick, that audit process, again. I'll keep this shorter and sweeter, but there is a structured way that the audits can be performed in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. So we do look at all the functions of the city, the controls that are in place, evaluate those controls, provide feedback wherever possible, or anywhere where money's coming in or going out. We're looking at the risk assessment over the financials to make sure that the audit procedures that are performed are done in a way where we feel comfortable with the material accuracy, what level of detail we perform those procedures, to ensure that we know that all areas are being properly audited and testing is properly done at the correct level of detail. During the audit phase, there's both compliance and that year-end portion of the audit. So we're looking at all compliance components, such as bid requirements, Fund Investment Act, grant requirements, anything that you all may have approved that have a compliance component to it. Then we're doing that fieldwork phase, where we're actually tying out the numbers for the financials, performing confirmation procedures wherever possible, such as your cash balances, debt balances, revenue from sales tax and property tax, things of that nature. And then as we're tying out your balance sheet and getting those confirmations and performing cutoff procedures, we're also testing the material accuracy of your revenues and your expenses. Once all testing is completed, we go through that review phase, that conclusion phase, where we go through multiple layers of review to ensure no additional procedures are necessary, that all proper required note disclosures are included in the audit report. Next is, just to go over the audit report, so from what's contained in the audit, there's the audit opinion letter. That's our opinion over the financials. Then the management's discussion and analysis, giving you some year-to-year comparison and touching on, providing dialogue over some of the higher material areas, such as your debt, capital, budget activity, things of that nature. Behind that's your basic financial statements, which is going to include your government-wide full accrual statements, as well as your fund-level statements, and then the notes to the financial statements, which is going to give you a lot of granular detail and descriptions on what those numbers in the financial statements consist of. Behind that, you're required supplementary information, so your general funds, budget to actual, and then behind that's other supplementary information, such as your TMRS-related data, as well as your consolidated schedule for non-major funds. As it relates to the auditor's opinion, there are four possible opinion types that we as auditors are able to issue: unmodified, qualified, disclaimed, or an adverse. We hope to see an unmodified opinion, which the city did mostly receive. There was a caveat with, for a few revenue transactions that did get qualified due to old records not being able to be obtained for around $60,000 worth of revenues. So over, in the grand scheme of things, not very material, but it did require us to carve that piece out and qualify that portion of the Next, financial highlights over your governmental funds. So this is comparing year-to-year your fund balances for the major governmental funds. Your general fund saw an overall decrease of 102,000 a year-over-year, bringing it from 2.2 million to 2.1 million in fund balance. Your grant fund saw a decrease of 874,000, and that's going to be the utilization of those ARPA funds that were used by the water fund to construct the infrastructure during the year, which that also triggered that single audit requirement. The capital projects, we saw there from a deficit of 282,000 to a zero. I mentioned previously, that's due to a timing of transfers that didn't occur in time in 2022. That was corrected in 2023. So all that was related to that water infrastructure project as well, went to that water fund. And then the non-major funds, we saw just a minor change of 2,000 due to those special revenue fund being utilized, as expected, for those non-major funds. Next, looking at your budget to actual summary for the general fund. Overall, you had a positive budget variance of 25,000. That consists of, on that top right corner, 105,000 positive budget variance for your revenues, which is due to your, 105 more than budget or expected coming in. Your expenditures overall exceeded expectations by 71,000, giving you that negative variance there. And then the other sources and uses is going to be transfer-related activity, a minor amount of 8,000 there, giving you that net 25,000 budget variance. As it relates specifically to that general funds, unassigned fund balance, we do want to look at that, evaluate the health of the fund by looking at the amount that's sitting there as it relates to your general funds expenditures for the year. So GFOA recommends a minimum of 16%. We typically recommend at least 25% to 30%. The city is sitting at 59% for 2023. So at that time, the general fund was in a healthy position and was able to meet and surpass that recommendation on the amount sitting unrestricted. Next, the financial highlights for your proprietary fund. So again, these are your, like, business-type activities, water, wastewater, and marina. So that top line there shows you the overall operating income. That's going to be a key indicator of the health of the operations for the fund. We want to make sure that it is an income and not a loss. As we do occasionally see losses on these type of funds, the water fund is operating well, with an operating income of 259,000, wastewater 28,000, and then your marina is 116,000 for operating income. And then after the non-operating related activities, that last line shows you the total change in net position for those funds. Water, we saw it jump up to 1.3 due to those transfers in from the grant funds and the capital project funds. The wastewater, a minor change, bringing it up to 35,000. And then the marina is consistent with those operating income amount, 116,000. So all three funds look good from an operating standpoint, and are in a healthy position. Then next, communication letters. So those two letters that come with the audit report, the first being the communication with those charged with governance. So again, it has a lot of required communication in it related to the audit concerning management's responsibility and the auditor's responsibility over the audit. There are three bullet points I always like to highlight from that letter. Audit was conducted in compliance with all ethics requirements regarding independence. Two, while we had the full cooperation of city management, there were some difficulties encountered just due to staff turnover and availability of support. And then the item three, that no uncorrected misstatements were identified, meaning that the audit adjustments that were identified have been reviewed and accepted by management. And then the second letter is a communication regarding internal controls. So that'd be if we find any areas of either efficiency changes, recommendations, or controls that we think should be in place, we would highlight those there. So that letter does have a few recommendations identified during the audit. And with that, I'll open up to any questions you might have.
I might just add on your recommendation letter, that each of your recommendations were reviewed by management and acknowledged and are in the process of being corrected.
Yes.
So, and that's all in the letter.
Yep. That's an important note to make, yeah.
Counsel, anything else? So I want to thank you guys for your hard work and diligence in getting this done. As you're well aware, this is near and dear to our town, and it's been a thorn, a bane, a dagger, everything else you can think of in a non-pleasant term into everybody's existence right now. So thank you for, at least thank your staff for us as well. We appreciate you guys.
And likewise, I just want to thank the city, because I know it is a lot of work on top of the normal day-to-day operation of the city. I know Mary was pulling her hair out every time we would ask her for something, and she said, I know, I already went and looked for it. He's providing everything possible that she could provide. And so it was a pleasure working with the city and being able to get this one behind us and move on to the next one.
Here, here. Okay, counsel, if there's no other discussion or questions, thank you again, sir. What I'd like to do is entertain a motion. Dennis, do you have anything to add to that?
I was just going to, oh, to the audit, no.
To the audit. Okay. So we'll look at the.
I still don't have that resolution, and Bruce says he doesn't either. We didn't get 25031.
The actual resolution?
The resolution itself, okay.
Okay, push pause.
Yeah. I mean, if we're going to approve it, it'd be nice to read it. We can move on if you want.
It is 31. It's 25031, the resolution for.
30. We can ratify it at our October meeting if we want to. I mean, there's no urgency. Okay, so it basically said, we approve Brooke Watson to do our audits. They've completed the audit, and they have presented the audit to council, and these are required to be performed in accordance with the law. And the purpose of the audit is to provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements of Morgan's Point for the year ending September 30th, '23 are free of material misstatement, which he has said they are after all the audit adjustments. The audit report has been compiled to meet the required provision of government accounting standards for. So that's the, that's the.
That's the resolution. Okay.
I think I can make a recommendation to approve Resolution 25031 to accept the fiscal year ending 2023 audit from Book Watson.
Okay, counsel.
I made a motion.
Counsel, do I have a second?
I second.
Any additional discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, four to nothing. All right, we will backtrack up now to ordinance 25018. I will draw your attention to that. We should all have a copy of that one. So Dennis, I'll turn it over to you for any additional discussion before we move into it.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, City Council, just to recap, the three-step process, one is a record vote on the budget. So when you make the motion to adopt the budget, we would also like you to consider the, which proposal, A or B option, or something that you all come up with separate from that, but also the proposed staff recommendations at the bottom and the supporting information amending the proposed budget that was filed with the city secretary's office back on August 22nd. And then the next step would be vote to ratify the property tax increase. That's not a record vote. And then the next step would be to vote on the setting of the tax rate, and that is, again, a record vote. That particular motion, when it's made, must state the words on your PowerPoint presentation. We'll have it up there if we can. Okay, we'll do that. And that's going to be, basically, I moved the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of the tax rate of 6398, which is effectively a 6.03% increase in the tax rate. And remember, that's not from the current tax rate, that's from the no new revenue rate, which is required to be factored that way. And that's all I have, ma'am.
Okay, so counsel, ordinance 25018, discuss, or consider adopting annual budget for the city of Morgan's Point Resort. So we will open it up. I will accept a motion, or entertain a motion, to adopt ordinance 25018. Of course, that'll be with the addition, well, I won't say that part. Yeah, I'll let you all decide that. So go ahead.
Yeah, so do we want to agree on which option that we want?
This is not about the tax rate. This is strictly.
No, 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 no. The option of how we're going to modify the budget before we approve the budget.
Well, the only thing on the budget, as far as the, the, the proposed, regardless of whether it's option A or B above, when you set the tax rate, regardless of that, we do need to make sure we have these changes in the proposed budget made upon the adoption of the budget.
So is 18 adopting the budget?
18 is just adopting the budget, does not fund the budget. It adopts the budget.
But shouldn't we agree how we're going to change the budget before we adopt it? We don't even know what we're adopting right now.
The changes are recommended by staff, unless you want to change it something else. You're more welcome to do that, too. You can say, we don't want that, and you can make some changes right here on the spot if you'd like to, in addition to that.
Yeah, so that's what we were discussing in the workshop, Dorothy, is the discussion to accept the, to approve the budget with the addition of option A and the supplemental information provided down at the bottom of the sheet of the proposal.
So we would make a motion to adopt, I will make a motion, you guys can correct it or amend it, however you want, to adopt the annual budget for the city of Morgan's Point for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, '25, through September 30th, 2026, with the changes, modifications of the proposed, I don't have it. I have a different one, with the proposed staff recommendations as listed on the handout that we got today, and option A, that has been also presented to us today.
Okay. Can I get a second on that? Okay, open for discussion. Any discussion?
I still am a little bit hesitant about raising the taxes. I think that I've had several residents who've said, don't raise these taxes. You did it last year. And I'm wondering, are we being responsible and staying within our budget by raising, raising the taxes? So I would, I would like to consider option B as well.
Say, any discussion?
Yes. Oh, sorry, Bruce, go ahead. I was just going to say, as we discussed in the last meetings, the question is whether to add a fee on water users, or whether to spread the needed expense for fire prevention above, through all the taxation, all the taxpayers. And as we just heard, many municipalities have had to raise taxes more than we did, and the lower values of the properties in the city will have many people paying the same or less, and mostly the more valuable properties will pay more. It's just more fair, in my view, to raise taxes a smidgen than to ask the water bill payers to pay the entire expense of the cleanup of the community and the prevention of fire.
Looking at the projects we want to fund in the city, the things that we want to keep going, if we don't.
There it is. Okay, no. It's going green, going red, green. Sounds like a bag of boys. All right, I'm going to go while it's green. All right, so like I said, I don't, I don't like to raise taxes at all. You know, nobody wants to pay more taxes, right? I get that. But if we're going to fund the projects that we want to keep going in this city, and the projects that we want to get going in this city, we're going to have to have some additional revenue. And that's got to come from some source. We've already talked about, we don't want to do fee-based stuff, because that's just not fair. So the fairest way to do it, unfortunately, is a little bit of additional tax. And if you look at the financial impact per home, I mean, it's minimal, for what we're going to be able to achieve to get these projects moving forward. And that's the only reason that I think that we would go with option A.
And I would, I would just add to that. I'm just wanting to open up for discussion, but we as a city don't have revenue from other sources. We don't have businesses, and we have many military in the town who don't even pay taxes, which is kind of, that's, you know, it affects our budget. So I do agree, we do need to come up with the revenue somewhere. And I think, I will say to any resident who's listening, I really feel like we as a city have worked very hard to make sure we are covering the necessary things that need to be done in this city, including brush cleanup, number one, but also maintaining those roads and those things. So I do think it's necessary. So I do think it's necessary to do that, so.
And we have on our agenda, just for further discussion, in October, the last meeting I handed out a list of revenue opportunities for the city based on certain fees that we could charge in the future. There's no numbers associated with it, but we are definitely going to look into a transaction fee for some of the services that we provide our residents, as opposed to a flat fee without getting any direct benefit, you know, services. So we are going to look at that, it is a problem. Also, this year, the legislature did not cap our taxes, which they have been threatening to do for years. They may do it next year, and next year, we may have to look at this fee again. It's not over, but right now, I don't think we have to.
Okay, thank you all. So we've got a motion on the floor that's been seconded to adopt the fiscal year budget with the amendments listed in Option A, as well as the proposed staff recommendation. The motion has been made and seconded. Yep, Ms. City Secretary, if you would conduct a record vote of counsel, please.
That's not, we're not ready for that one yet, that's going to be later on. This is just on the budget, just a record vote around the table.
Roll call, another word is a roll call, yeah. Yes.
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 Okay, so by a record vote of four-nil, the budget for FY 2526 is officially adopted.
And I want to thank the staff again, Dennis, for all the work that went into the budget and all the meetings you have also had to attend to get us through this process this year. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank the staff, we appreciate it.
That was 25018, by the way, just for those keeping score at home. Okay, next up is Resolution 25030, which is a considered memorandum resolution ratifying the property tax revenue increase reflected in the annual budget. Dennis, any comments on that? Anything you would like to add before we move to a vote on that or a discussion?
This will be Mayor, City Council, this is going to be discussed memorandum. It does not require a vote to that effect. It, this is not, this is, this is the one where you're just recognizing the additional revenue in the council memorandum.
Okay, so counsel, Resolution 25030 is a memorandum resolution for, as previously stated, ratifying property tax revenue increase. So I'll entertain a motion to approve 25030.
I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum resolution ratifying the property tax rate increase as reflected in the annual budget that we just adopted.
Okay, can I get a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Four-nil on 25030. Thank you, and then the last up is ordinance 25019, discuss and consider ordinance setting the tax rate of 60, I'm sorry, let me, 0.6398 per hundred dollar valuation, comprised of .6158 for maintenance and operations and .0240 for debt services for FY 26, tax year '25. This one also requires a record vote. And counsel, I'll remind you that the statement for the motion that needs to be read verbatim, whoever chooses to lead the way, please make your motion using the presented verbiage.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.6398, which is effectively a 6.03% increase in the tax rate.
Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to say that everyone on this council pays taxes, and our friends pay taxes, and our family pay taxes, and nobody likes to raise taxes. But we have to support this city with certain services. We can't do without those services. And the tax rate increase is really minimal, and in some cases, people will pay less taxes than they did last year because of the valuations. So I think it's really something we had to do.
Madam Secretary, would you conduct a roll vote again, please?
Yes.
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 All right, a record vote, four-nil, ordinance 25019, setting the tax rate, is adopted. You believe it, can you believe it? Okay, that is the extent of our business this evening. So before we adjourn, we'll go once around the room. Counsel, any comments before we close up shop for the night?
Well, the first people I want to thank right off the top is our council. Man, this has been a heck of a month, getting the budget at the end of August and pushing through 90 days in multiple meetings and being honest with each other, being candid, taking into consideration what the residents are telling us, along with our judgment, along with the numbers that have been presented to us. So thank you, counsel, and again, thanks, staff, and always thank the residents that came to speak and give us your opinion on these matters, because your opinion matters. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to echo that, but just thanks to citizens for your input. You know, we really, really, really did take it to heart, we looked at it. And I just want everyone to know that, you know, this council has put a lot of time into this. It's been some headaches and some heartburn along the way, trying to figure out how we were going to make these numbers work. And staff, thank you for all the help that you all did to put this together as well. Just rest assured that we're doing what's in the best interest of the city to make sure that we keep moving forward. We don't want to fall behind on projects and things that we need to get done, especially, as was talked about before, the water system. I mean, we have to have that, not a choice. So, anyway, thank you, citizens, for your input and for your participation.
Yeah, I would say, reiterate that, say thank you. The other thing I was thinking about is just start paying attention, because things are going to be happening. I noticed just this, today, they came and picked up brush again. They're getting ready to get going with that, they've been in the process of planning and getting it ready. The chipper's out there, they're moving forward with that, and so just seeing that moving. And also, one of the things when we're talking about brush cleanup, I noticed as I was out for a walk that there is a notice, that a violation on a private lot there that says, you know, basically, we have to clean it up, you have to get rid of the dead debris. And so this is what we've talked about, and now I'm starting to see it happening. So it's going to be a good year.
I'd like to remind everybody in the community that we're not Austin, or San Antonio, or Houston, and every member of your council and the mayor are volunteers. We're not politicians, we're not, we have no aspirations to be in the assembly or in the Congress. And we really, in our discussions, have the best for the city in our hearts, and that's how we act.
Mayor, City Council, thank you for all your hard work and consideration on this budget. I know it's not an ideal situation, it's never easy when you switch from one environment to another, as we did, and at the same time, there are some challenges on making up some time. I'm not saying that it's going to happen this year or next, but every year, you chip away at the roads, the vegetative debris, the water infrastructure, and keep moving in the right direction. You'll, you can look back, and generations from now, we'll appreciate the fact that no one lost, kept their, the fact is, they kept their eye on the ball on these major projects. It makes all the difference in the world, because it's going to affect future generations to come. And I know it's not easy, but I don't think there's, too many people can argue with the decision to move forward with those kind of projects, drainage included. There was another thing there that's not being overlooked, so, thank you.
All right, I think it's all been said, so with that, I've got 1848. We will adjourn the special session.